I've got my own copy.
The Muscatine City Council will now come to order. Fran, would you begin this evening by performing a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natpick.
Present.
Chahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We'll begin this evening with communications from the citizens. If anybody in council chambers has an issue they want to discuss with council, please come to the podium at this time and give us your name and your address, please. Very good. Item five. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And those items include item six A, item eight A, items twelve A through C, and tonight's bills totaling $1,598,052.32. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, your honor.
That was Phil.
Second.
And second, Tom. Any discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Moving down to item number seven on your agenda. This is a proposed golf course irrigation project under public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed golf course irrigation project. The current irrigation system at the golf course has outlived its useful life and is beginning to fail. The proposed project will basically replace the old single-row hydraulically-controlled system with a modern double-row electrically-controlled system. The new system will allow for more efficient and effective watering of the fairways. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Motion by Osama to close. Second by Scott. Any discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item ten from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the Miller Deer Farm subdivision in Muscatine County. The four-lot subdivision is located in Muscatine County but within two miles of the city limits. If approved, the northern two lots will be sold to the adjoining property owner, but all four lots will remain in agricultural use. The subdivision will not require the extension of any public improvements and fronts in existing county road. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this request. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Jeanette.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
And Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
I forgot, Mark is on the other side of Phil.
Aye.
Forgot you're over there, sir. And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item B, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation of a public right-of-way remnant in the city of Muscatine. Salvatore and Stephanie Lobionko recently purchased a 3.94-acre partial located off Myrtle Lane. They are requesting the city vacate, sell, and transfer to them a 10-foot-wide access remnant that will allow for the extension of utilities to the property they recently purchased. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this request. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, September 20th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
And motion by Tom.
Second, your honor.
Second by Scott. I'll get you next time, Bob, okay? Any discussion, council? No discussion. This is a roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Time.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item eleven, from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance revising Title VII Police Regulations, Chapter 18, Snow Emergency Regulations. When an emergency is declared, and I will repeat, when an emergency is declared, on-street parking is limited in order to allow plows to access and clear the entire street during a winter storm. This revised ordinance will affect those who park their vehicles on the streets of Muscatine outside the central business district. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second, Mark. Discussion, council? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item B, which is a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the bid opening date for the golf course irrigation project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That would be Bob.
Second.
Second, Scott. Discussion, council? And this is a roll call vote. Was that just a cough, or did someone?
No.
Just a...
Just a cough.
Just a cough, okay, thank you. No discussion. Roll call vote, beginning with... Where was I?
Bob.
Beginning with Bob, okay?
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution accepting easements for the 2012 Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. This project is planned to begin this year and run through the next construction season. In order to complete the work, temporary and permanent easements from five property owners must be acquired by the city. Negotiations have been completed for the required easements. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Phil, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second Osama, discussion, council? No discussion, also a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution approving the purchase of right-of-way for the 2012 Harrison Street Extension Parking Lane Project. This project is nearing completion. Negotiations with FBF Rental led to a purchase agreement that allowed the city to move forward on the construction of a drop-off lane behind Colorado Elementary School. It is now necessary to make final payment to the property owner. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
I think that was Phil and Jeanette. Any discussion, council? And another roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing for the Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. The city has partnered with Ripley's Incorporated to extend sanitary gravity sewer from Park Avenue West to Ripley's Mobile Home Park. The Mobile Home Park is under court order to modify their existing failing lagoon system to meet regulations established by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Options to extend this sanitary sewer were reviewed, including a pump station, but the recommendations from staff and engineers focused on utilizing gravity flow to the existing Mad Creek line. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held on September 20th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Ooh, that's everybody at once. We'll give it to Scott, in a second.
Second, your honor.
Second, Bob. Any discussion, council? And a roll call vote, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution accepting easements for the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project, Phase Two. The city began a three-phase construction of Cedar Street from Param Street to Hauser in 2011. The various phases included the extensions of the Papoose Tree Culvert under Cedar Street at its intersection of Wood Creek Lane, and an extension near the Stonebrook Drive-Cedar Street intersection, utility upgrading and replacement, construction of passing lanes, bicycle and/or pedestrian walkway construction on the east side of Cedar Street, and other work. Temporary and permanent easements of right-of-way acquisition will be needed for the work. Iowa DOT procedures will be followed in this process. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That's Phil, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mark. Discussion, council? Also a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration, is a request from the police department to declare one of the department's old light bars as surplus. This light bar was replaced with a newer LED light bar. If declared surplus, the light bar would be donated to Shooting Star, which is a new indoor... I'm going to say it's a firing range, who has offered the police department use of their facility during inclement weather. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Phil again.
Second, your honor.
And second Osama, discussion, council?
I just had a question. What are they going to do with the light bar? Disco style.
No, hopefully not.
Shoot at it.
I believe they want to use it and actually get it working down there when we do the shoots down there.
So we...
I know that the county has donated one, and so has State Patrol.
To them?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So there's going to be a letter that says this will never end up on a vehicle?
I suppose I could make that happen, yeah.
I hate having these light bars go on surplus, and then somebody sticks one on his car, some kid, and...
You see it in the next Fourth of July parade?
Yeah, yeah, or worse.
There's really nothing illegal about having it on your car, you just can't have it on.
I...yeah, I understand that.
But yeah, if you need a letter, I'm sure I could get that.
I mean, if you think it's necessary...
To be honest with you, I don't think it's going to be necessary.
Okay, if they're going to keep it inside, I...
Yeah, I think it's just going to be on a shelf with the other two, and like I say, my understanding was I think they were going to make it actually functional.
Chief, who are the owners of the Shooting Star Range?
I believe it's somebody that was involved with Lewis Brothers, I believe. I don't really know exactly what they're...
The Lewis Brothers.
The two themselves, I believe, yeah.
I don't know, they're...I think one's Don.
Donnie and Dale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dale and Don, I think.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Anybody else, council? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Folks, this is a voiced vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve an agreement for wood mulching at the compost site. In October 2011, the city entered into an agreement with Complete Ground Maintenance, better known as CGM, of Davenport to mulch brush and trees to handle the excess material at the compost site. Due to a change in ownership and legal issues, staff gave a 30-day notice to CGM to end their contract on July 20th, 2012. Staff is now recommending the approval of an agreement between County Stone of Mylin, Illinois, to provide the same services as outlined in the previous agreement with CGM. This agreement will allow County Stone to remove excess materials from the compost site, and in return... Country Stone, I'm sorry, I've been misreading that. Country Stone would provide wood mulching and screening of compost. There is no monetary value for this exchange of services. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That would be Scott.
Second.
Second, Jeanette. Discussion, council? It's a voiced vote. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to declare property as surplus. The city periodically declares excess property as surplus in order to make it available to the public for purchase. An online auction service known as Public Surplus is used to dispose of property and equipment. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Phil.
Second, your honor.
Second, Tom. Discussion, council? Another voiced vote. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve the installation of a handicap parking stall at 522 Mulberry Avenue. The city's traffic committee received a request from the Hy-Vee Healthcare located at 522 Mulberry Avenue to install a handicap parking stall in front of their store. Customers of Hy-Vee Healthcare are often elderly and/or disabled, and designating a space in front of the building would assist these individuals when they need products or services from the business. It is the traffic committee's recommendation this request be approved. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item K, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve the purchase of a truck for park maintenance. Six bids were received with a low bid from Deary Brothers in an amount not to exceed $16,693 for a Silverado 1500 pickup. There is $17,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Mark. And Tom on the second. Any discussion, council?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item L, presented for city council's consideration, is a request from the police department to declare wrestling mats as surplus. These mats are from the YMCA and were originally going to be used for training of defensive tactics. The high school wrestling room is used for this training. The police department would like to donate the wrestling match to the Muscatine Boxing Club once they are declared surplus. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Mark.
Second, your honor.
Second Osama, and discussion, council?
Is the boxing club a not-for-profit organization?
I'm pretty sure it is.
It's not-for-profit.
Any other discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Dropping down to item 14 on your agenda, communication from council members, and we'll begin...
Yes, your honor, I'd like to... I would like to make a motion to amend a previous action of the council. It is dated August 16th, it's number 22190, and the minutes of the prior meeting is relevant to the recommendation of the traffic committee to place a stop sign at Bonnie Drive and Mulberry Avenue. I would like that amendment to suggest that we allow or grant the action for a period of 30 days so that traffic can be evaluated and they report back to us.
And Greg, would you outline quickly the rules as they pertain to a motion of this nature?
If the council desires to act on the motion tonight, of course, it will require a second, and it will also require a supermajority of the council, or five members rather than four members, to approve it. If it was to be done in a subsequent meeting, it would only require a majority of council.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Scott. Discussion, council?
I'd just reiterate what I indicated the last meeting. If this is truly to get traffic flow out of the high school, the flow has improved. The first day that all students were at the high school, I was on the corner. I found myself without anything to do, and I thought sitting on the corner watching cars move was interesting. So I spent from 3:30 to 4 o'clock, and for 25 minutes, there's...you have to wait a little bit before things start backing up, but they started backing up three to five cars at 3:20 or 3:35, and was cleared at 4:00. There wasn't any more cars on the street. And the last 20 cars, since I taught at the high school for 35 years, I recognized a lot of the staff members that were leaving, and they were waving at me, wondering what sense I had, I guess. This last week, Tuesday or Wednesday, I was also out there. The traffic started backing up again at 3:35, and it was finished at 3:55, so it only took 20 minutes this time. Somebody waiting to leave, if they get into the back of the line, they obviously didn't get in the back of the line at 3:35, so they're not...students and staff are not waiting an exorbitant amount of time to leave the high school. The previous...the first time I sat, the vehicles would pull up, stop, look both directions most of the time, depending on the student driver, and whether they had their cellphone with them or not. But they could pretty much, at will, go left or right. Yesterday or the other day when I was out there, there was a little more traffic, but obviously it cleared up in 20 minutes, not 25 minutes. So I know the city has put a crossing over at Heritage Heights. The striping was finished, I think, today, because when I passed, there were checkered things on the street, and the signs were up. We have students crossing at my corner, at Hauser and Mulberry. Somebody gave them their own little stop sign, which I think that's a little scary, but it's a little handheld stop sign. Unfortunately, the young lady, when she went up to the curb, was waving it rather than holding it. She didn't get the idea that you should hold it, but they crossed safely. I just...I don't believe that this is necessary, and a trial is fine, but I don't believe it's going to make a difference.
The reason that I made the motion was part in response to some public feedback, in part because it is my understanding that a recommendation of the traffic committee, at least not in recent history, has never been rejected, and this was a recommendation from the traffic committee. And finally, when we considered the matter earlier, there was no one here, no representative from the traffic committee who represented the school district. And I understand that they're here tonight, and they would like to speak to us about it.
Well, we had a representative from the traffic committee here last week, but he happens to work for the city...
Right, not from the school.
And not a member of the school district's employees, so...
Joining us this evening from the Muscatine Community School District, Don Krings, the transportation supervisor for the school, and Jeff Miller, who is the maintenance supervisor. Gentlemen, if you want to take the podium.
First mayor and city council, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to talk on behalf of this request. My name is Jeff Miller. I am the maintenance and facility supervisor of the Muscatine Community School District. I also sit on the traffic committee for the city of Muscatine. About a month ago, the school district made a request to the traffic committee to move on the signs from...move the signs from the front of Mulberry School to the corner of Mulberry and Bonnie Drive. It was approved unanimously by the traffic committee to bring this request to the city council for Muscatine for a vote. I'd like to give you some additional information on this request. First, the high school first opened in 1975 with three grades totaling a little over 1,100 students. The high school in 1984 added another grade level, bringing ninth graders to the school building for a building that was built for three grade levels. Yes, the school district has added several times to accommodate the increase, which now includes a student population of anywhere from 1,600 to 1,700 students. Since 1975 to the present, it is no secret there are more kids driving. In some cases, you can obtain a school permit to drive from school and back home as young as 15. It's felt by the principals at both the high school in Mulberry as well as the traffic committee that the stop signs will be better served not only for the safety for the elementary students of Mulberry, but also the traffic flow for the student body at MHS. We might also be able to adjust the amount of time the signs are turned, making that time possibly shorter. Out of the cars leaving Bonnie Drive on Wednesday and today, it took an average of 23 minutes for an average of 159 cars to leave the premise. Out of those cars, 68 of those cars, or 43%, turned left onto Mulberry, causing a backup in traffic. In closing, yes, the school has changed, and now housing significantly more students as opposed to the 1,100 it was built for. We have added on, but we have not addressed the traffic problem. That is the population it has created. This could be viewed as a safety improvement and a traffic flow improvement. Please reconsider the request we are making. Finally, here is a signed petition from the Bonnie Drive residence and surrounding community. Thank you for your time.
Don?
Doesn't it have to go to Fran? Doesn't Fran get the petition? May I ask him a question first? Jeff, a question. Jeff, do I hear you correctly that you're not going to have a stop sign out there in front of Mulberry School?
Correct. What...and if you follow me, the safety factor is they no longer have a need to have the kids go directly across the street. What they want to do...
They don't have any students at all?
No, they do not. The principal, I talked to her, what...most of their students are at Heritage Heights. They have two students that live down Mulberry but on that side. So by moving the stop signs down, you will now allow the students, with staff member support, to cross on the west side of Bonnie Drive, and now they're walking along the cemetery to go around the corner and then enter into Heritage Heights.
Is there a sidewalk there?
Yes, there is.
On that side?
Yes, there's also, there's also crosswalks already painted there that have been there. So it is a natural crossing.
Because I don't want those students crossing in front of that school with no stop signs.
They will not be, I've talked to the principal.
Okay.
They didn't talk to all the staff, or kids, because last week, there were like a half a dozen kids that crossed in front of Mulberry School.
They're still crossing there, Councilman Fitzgerald, because that is the designated crossing at this point.
Anyone else, any questions for Jeff? Thanks, Jeff. Don?
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Don Krings. I'm the transportation director for Muscatine Schools. I'd like to talk, I'm in favor of the, of changing the stop to a three-way stop, for a number of reasons. First, most, I mean, I've had drivers come up to me requesting it over the last couple of years. The principal from the high school has requested it, has wanted it for a number of years, and I think this is a perfect opportunity to give it a shot, to see if it'll work, to see if we can get traffic flowing better out of the high school. Right now, I have basically one way out of the high school, for my buses to get out in a timely manner. My kids can only be on the buses for a limited amount of time, and right now, my options are, well, I have one option, and let's go out Cedar Street. Because if they go out Mulberry, they'll get caught up in that traffic, and that'll wait, if they do get behind all that traffic, they could be there for twenty to twenty-five minutes. Most of my kids, for elementary, can only be on there for an hour. So my problem is, is that, I'm not saying that this will allow my buses to go out Mulberry. I'm hoping it does. But even if it takes some of the traffic away from the Cedar Street exit, and moves it to Mulberry, because right now, we're having a lot of traffic coming around the high school, and these kids are wanting to go out Cedar Street because it's faster. If we can improve traffic out Mulberry, alleviate some of that traffic going out Cedar Street, my buses might be able to get in and out faster, it'll be safer for the kids, and that's our, our number one goal is safety. If it wasn't safe, we wouldn't be coming, we wouldn't even recommend it. But if we can get them home quicker, get them off the bus, it, that's our goal. That is our number one goal.
I have a question for you two. Have you ever considered the possibility of making a right turn lane on Bonney Drive there by Mulberry?
That's out of my jurisdiction, so.
Yes, we have, and I would like to call Chief Talkington up to talk about that, and why, why it does not work.
... or a sign? Sign is a lane.
Oh, no, no, I want you to put a lane in.
Oh, a lane, I thought you said a sign, I'm sorry. Um, yes.
Perhaps Randy would be better as soon as you address that. And besides, he's dressed up tonight.
Yeah.
We have discussed the possibility of a right turn lane. Personally, from staff point of view, staff being, the traffic committee, traffic committee is represented by public works staff, a number of them are here, Steve, John, Randy, Brett, Jeff, myself, and we believe that a right turn lane is a more permanent solution than even the stop signs there. And we have actually put together some conceptual drawings of how this would be designed, and it is the traffic committee's opinion, and perhaps recommendation, that you should let us move forward with this to give a better design, and what that cost would be for that, and then present it back to the school district and the city council for their consideration. But we do feel that a right turn lane, which is not unlike a lot of other key intersections, a lot of other places, where you have straight or right turn, and to use this as a permanent fix in the future to help improve the traffic flow out of Bonney Drive.
Randy, I saw my question.
Well, I just want to make clear here, I think Tom's motion here to give the traffic committee a thirty-day trial, and based on the success or the failure of that, the traffic committee will come back to council and tell us if it's working or not, and what's other alternative. Is that, is that what's on the table right now?
That is the motion.
The motion.
Although, I would like to say that I'm in favor of pursuing the study of the right turn lane, it seems like a more permanent solution.
Sure. But for the time being, as a trial for thirty days, that makes sense.
And in trying to balance the pros and cons of this, we know from experience that when you do something temporarily, and then you remove it, it creates all sorts of confusion in the motorists. And with all due respect to the young drivers that are coming out of there on their cellphones and not knowing whether or not the traffic now on Mulberry is stopping or not, I'm a little bit more concerned about that. It doesn't make them any less of drivers than anybody else, but that has been our experience, and we experienced that for sure when we had the stop sign, three-way stop at Hauser and Mulberry. And we removed that, and it took citizens that use that area quite a while to figure out just what are they supposed to do there. And so, that's, that's the downside of something temporary, but the motion is to do something temporary. I think that in the next thirty days, we could try to put together some more definite plans and get some costs to determine then if we want to even move forward with trying to put in a right turn lane.
And that would eliminate, that would eliminate the stop signs?
I'm going to speak for myself now, Phil.
I understand that.
Okay, but in my opinion, that would eliminate the stop sign. Got it?
After thirty days, after the thirty-day trial, they'd bring it back and either ask for approval for a permanent, for it to be permanent, or they were just taking it out? Is that...
Yeah, we're getting, just so that you know, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves on this, but if you do say go with thirty days, and we ask John to put together a design, which, as I said preliminarily, has been done, and put together some cost estimates on that, and come back within this thirty-day period and say, this is the result of the thirty-day trial, and this is the cost of a turn lane, how do you want to go at this point? And then I think you're in a position to make your next decision regarding this matter.
And we did this, as Randy pointed out, we did a six-month trial on Hauser, Mulberry, stopped the traffic on Mulberry, and when we pulled those out, we had some real close calls out there for several, several days.
We did.
I mean, we didn't, I don't remember having any accidents, but man, there was, there was horns and squeal in tires and...
There is uncertainty as to what you're supposed to do when you pull up there.
Because they were used to it, and then they were gone, and they, they pulled out and about got creamed. I would rather, I guess at this point, I would rather not do a thirty-day trial and look at the right turn lane. I think that, I think everybody would be, I think, I think it would work out a lot better. My problem is that we are probably, with, with the development of the theater and other development going on out on Mulberry, as several residents have told me, if you think that people are going to go to the theater via the bypass, you're nuts. He said they're coming right down Mulberry Avenue. And so eventually, sooner than later, we're going to have to put a stop sign at that intersection, permanent stop sign for traffic control. And then you would be stopping traffic there, and at, and at Bonney, and then at the church, and I, I like the idea of having the traffic stopped at Mulberry School with the crosswalk. There was an adult the other day that had, I don't remember whether she had a stop sign thing or not, but she was there, she had a group of students, some of them wanted to cross at that location, she helped them get across the street, and then she walked down to the other, and then I was gone, so I'm not sure where, how far she traveled with them, but they were heading down toward the other side.
But Phil, we're talking about twenty-three minutes at three-thirty. I mean, it's, I mean, what's, we're talking about the theater and everything else, I don't think that everybody will hop from the school and run directly to the theater at three-twenty or three-thirty for twenty-three minutes. I'm talking about the traffic flow at that time, you know?
I understand that.
Twenty-three minutes in the afternoon, if you look at the other corporation businesses, they off at five, so I don't think there's much traffic during that period for twenty-three minutes. And I don't see a problem, myself here, listening to the traffic committee and both sides here, since I wasn't present the last meeting, it's like, well, if that's what it takes here to see what the flow is going to be, evaluate the situation, and be brought back to council again, I'm not seeing any issue with that at this time here, that's just my personal opinion, so.
Jeff, question for Jeff.
Councilman Fitzgerald, the stop signs that you're talking about that were placed at Mulberry and Hauser were on all day. These are not.
No, I know, no, I understand that.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not muddying the waters and comparing apples and oranges, because this is, this is a limited time in the morning, people know that they're, they're entering a school area.
And you have permission to do them from...
I think by not trying this, I think by not trying this, who knows in thirty days, it may work wonderfully, okay? And if it does, we're not going to have a right-hand turn lane put in tomorrow or next month, maybe next summer, if all goes well, and I'm all for the right-hand turn lane. I am not for at least trying this and seeing if it doesn't work.
But if your intention is to bring more traffic out Mulberry, or out onto Mulberry, as what I'm hearing...
No, my intention is to move traffic out in an orderly manner. Right now, Councilman Fitzgerald, I stood out there as you did. Those kids get impatient. Yes, they're young. You know, we were all young once. I think we need to try it, and if you move them out in a timely fashion, I think they'll get it. I don't think you'll have the problems that you truly believe you'll have.
Jeff?
Yes.
Who pays for this right-hand turn lane?
Good question. I don't know. It hasn't been brought up. We have just, we have, we have just batted it around a little bit.
Who pays for the, this right-hand turn lane? If it benefits the school more than it does the city?
I think that's a political decision that needs to be made, and it doesn't, doesn't come from the staff, okay? We can tell you what the cost was be, and you can determine how you would like to see it funded.
I think it might be a good idea to have a joint meeting with the school board, and we can discuss that at one point here.
I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's something that the school, it is a direct benefit to the school.
Whatever benefit the school and the city, the community as a whole here, a joint meeting, and we can discuss that, and hopefully we come to a resolution. I mean, I don't know what the cost is going to be, you know, John might be sharpening the pencil a little bit here to make it work best for both parties, so we can go from there, so.
I would like to clarify, I don't need you, Randy, for this, but I would like clarity on one matter, and that is, if we grant this, this option to put the sign in at Bonney Drive, and we eliminate the crossing at Mulberry School, what assurance do we have that kids won't be trying to cross there? Will there be supervision? How are we going to address that? I don't want to see anybody hurt.
As Don has indicated, as, as school employees, safety is the first, okay? You, I have the promise of the principal that that will not happen, and if there were to be a student that needed to cross down the road at a, at a different time, they will have a staff member help them. But at this point, like I said, I don't think we're utilizing those stop signs to the best of their ability. What we're doing is stopping people at a point, basically for no reason, because no one crosses there anymore. They're all at Heritage Heights, and times change, so the school district, I can only speak, school district takes safety very seriously.
Jeff, I had a kind of a related question to that. You don't, the committee doesn't think it's necessarily more problematic for the students to cross at a three-way intersection than in front of the school?
We're, we're proposing that by putting that in, you're having them cross with a crossing person. They're not just going to be on their own out there. There will be a staff member from Mulberry crossing them, as Phil, I haven't seen her, and I don't know, I don't know who she is, but...
Yeah.
They have a person, a staff member, that does have a small sign. They would be crossing on the west side of Bonney Drive, so that now they are across Mulberry and walking west past the east.
They really don't have to concern themselves with the Bonney Drive traffic coming along Bonnie, it's just...
They would not, yes. You'd eliminate, you'd eliminate them, and I, if you look at this, the way it's set up right now, if you cross, the, the kids that are at Heritage Heights in front of Mulberry, and they start heading west, they still have to cross in front of Bonney Drive with people on Mulberry turning in and not stopping. That is, that...
Yeah, I see.
Jeff, why don't you just put a security guard out there, one of those people, and have them direct traffic after school for twenty-three minutes?
I'm not, I can't answer that.
Is that possible?
I, I can't answer that.
I can, I can address that. There used to be a sheriff's patrol officer that was assigned that Bonney Drive duty, and probably, there was a charge or a fee involved, and it probably got to be pricey, I don't know, but that, that is a practice that used to take place.
How far would it be, if we take out that stop sign in front of Mulberry School where they cross, we're supposed to cross now?
Yes.
How far would they be walking before they cross? Where are we moving that designated crossing?
We're moving that designated crossing, if you're coming out Bonney Drive, it would be, if I'm in a car, it'd be to the left of Bonney Drive, by the, the side of the cemetery. There's a crosswalk already there.
But I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with that area, is it a block?
Five hundred feet.
What's the distance in change?
Three hundred to five hundred feet.
Probably half a block.
What would you guess?
Five hundred feet on the outside. The other, the other issue is, we've put a crossing on, on Hauser Street, or, yeah, Hauser Street, at Heritage Heights. You have them cross Hauser Street, and then you have them cross Mulberry. There's a group of students that come down, and they cross Mulberry at my, my intersection, at Hauser and Mulberry. They cross one intersection, and they walk, they walk down, they have to cross Clermont, but Clermont's not a major problem, and they walk right on down Mulberry. I don't know why we're moving them over to the cemetery property, and then having them, worrying about them crossing a second, what I consider a major intersection.
You're not, you're not. The ones that need to cross to go to Heritage Heights will be the ones crossing Mulberry, okay? The ones that live in the housing addition to the north, why would you make them cross and then cross back?
No, no. It is the Heritage Heights students that come right now, parents have escorted them the first two weeks of school, they bring them down my, right in front of my, through my driveway and out, they cross, they've got them to cross Mulberry, and then they walk down on the sidewalk to Mulberry School.
So I can't answer that. If the parents, if that's how the parents want their kids to cross...
Phil, this was, the traffic committee was visited by a parent from Heritage Heights who walks their grandson, grandchild over to Mulberry School, and the request came from that individual, and she indicated, I don't have anything in writing on that, or that she represented many of the parents and students in the Heritage Heights area. My understanding is that they were not comfortable in crossing Hauser at Mulberry because traffic doesn't stop, and you have the traffic that is blocking the view with having to stop on Hauser and Mulberry and the turning movements. And they were more comfortable with the crosswalk further down across from Heritage Heights, where they have full view of where the traffic is, and that is, that's how that request came about. So, what, and then from that point on, you know, they're on the cemetery side and on down, so, just so you know, that's how that came about.
Okay. Well, we seem to be putting a lot of crosswalks and stop signs in, and if we, maybe we need to, maybe we need to look at the permanent stop signs that need to go in at Mulberry Hauser, and then we don't need to worry about the Bonney Drive. Because they, yeah, I don't know why, I mean, frankly, I would not ever have my child cross any more intersections than what they have to. When my kids went to Mulberry School, they rode a bus for an hour in the morning.
I actually think that your point earlier about with the increased traffic on Mulberry, and I know that we are looking at long-term plans of Mulberry's the next connector road that needs to be upgraded, that, that entire... that needs to be upgraded, that, that entire intersection needs to be reviewed, and perhaps traffic control devices go in. Mulberry be made a three-lane road, very similar to what we're doing at Colorado, what we're doing on Cedar, because it is going to take that kind of traffic. I would imagine that this type of review and recommendation will be coming within the next four or five years.
I'd hope it was sooner than that.
Always about the money.
Oh, I know, I know.
Any other discussion, counsel? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Don and Randy? Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second, and plenty of discussion. It's now time for a roll call vote. The motion was made by Tom, so we'll start with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Aye.
Phil? And Mark?
Aye.
I believe that's seven, six, I'm sorry, six, one in favor.
We just got a 13-member council.
Okay, in other business, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you at this time to vacate council chambers.
Council comments.
Number 14, section 14.
Which, you confused me with that 12 and 14.
I know, I know.
Okay, before you leave, folks, comments from the council, beginning with Councilman Lorette.
I have nothing this evening, mayor, thank you.
And Phil?
I have nothing at this time.
Todd?
Nothing, thank you, your honor.
Osama, I know you do.
Yeah, I, I have one comment here, or just make it as a reminder for the citizen of Muscatine here. September 11th, it's next Tuesday, and there's the instructional support levy vote, and that's, it's by the Community School District. And why is the ISL important to Muscatine? I just took the few highlights here. The Muscatine Community School District is not in equal position with other school district in the state. Second, it's not an increase in the tax levy. And third, there will still be an annual checks and balances for the board to control what the tax levy rate will be in the future. And I think this is very important for the district to maintain the current level of service, and what I would like to recommend here, I'm not recommending how to vote, but I would like to encourage the citizen to go out and vote next Tuesday here for this instructional levy. So, that's just a reminder here, we're talking about the street and stop sign, maybe there's a more important issue for the school district here than stop signs, so it's just a reminder here for the citizen that it's going to take place next Tuesday, September 11th, and they are encouraged to go and vote.
Anything else?
Thank you, your honor.
Councilman Bynum?
Your honor, I, I'd just like to remind the public that, and certainly invite them to attend and help us remember a Muscatine fallen firefighter, Mike Cruz. This coming Friday, a week from tomorrow, September 14th, at 10:00 a.m., is the tentative schedule. Speakers will be, of course, our mayor, the fire department chapman, and the fire chief. Refreshments will follow, but it's, we really need to honor our, our fallen brethren. The Honor Guard procession will starts at 10:00 o'clock at the corner of Fifth and Cedar. Flags will be lowered, speakers, bell ceremony, and bagpipes, if you've ever seen a bagpiper. Honor Guard procession will approximately 10:30 p.m. Thank you, your honor.
A.m.
A.m., excuse me.
Thank you, Bob. Jeanette?
I have nothing except I think Osama should introduce his nephew.
Okay, well, tonight with us, I brought a, a young gentleman with me here from 6,000 miles away from here.
Oh, wow.
We have a visitor from Jordan visiting here, and he's staying with us, so I thought what best education he can get in the United States than attending Muscatine City Council. So, and that's why I'm here, Johnny. Thank you, Jeanette.
Is that, is that because you're not going to feed him otherwise?
Oh, no, he, he is well-fed. Iowa, Iowa beef, so that's no problem.
How many comments?
No, I have nothing further, your honor.
Okay, let's go to Greg. Any comments?
Just a quick reminder, October 25th, 5:15, we have our goal-setting session here in council chambers Thursday night.
October 5th.
October 25th. I'll send out a reminder tomorrow, too.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Fran?
Well, I would like to apologize, there were a couple of items that were not on the agenda, on the, the agendas that were in the city council chambers, but they were added late in the day, and I was getting looks over here, so I explained why the missing items were off.
And, and if I would have made sure that my, I, I thought my tablet was charged and I got here and opened it up, and, and boom, it said battery low, and wow.
Yeah, it was, it was not intentional, but we had a couple of items that came in a little bit later, and I had already had those ran.
Counselor, what do you think? Should we accept Fran's apology?
I don't think it's her problem. It's mine, I ought to check the stupid thing, make sure it works.
Anything else, Fran? Uh, Monday is Fran's birthday?
Uh-oh.
I'm in trouble.
I'm taking the day off, too.
Especially now.
25 again?
I can't take the day off. I've had people come in today asking for carrot bars, so I have to be here on Monday.
Very good, very good. I only have a couple of things. One is the big annual Iowa, Iowa State game, and obviously, Councilman Fitzgerald, who wears his Iowa State shirt every Thursday when there's a council meeting.
We don't hold that against him, or should we?
I would hope not.
That's, that's up to you, but may the best team win, as well.
Yes, there you go.
And the other item is, the Sea of Muscatine has been invited to an annual celebration, and as well as a thank you for helping Fruitland, the, the town of Fruitland, give their area children a fun and safe place to play. They have new toys in their playground in Fruitland, and there's festivities beginning tomorrow night and on into Saturday night, to include a parade, I think, which takes place at nine Saturday morning, 11:00 Saturday morning. So if you're looking for something to do Saturday, Fruitland must be the place to be, so. That's all I have. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for bringing with us tonight. I ask you to vacate council chambers now.
Look, look, mayor, we need a motion.
About to do that.
Oh, okay.
So I have a motion to enter into closed session.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Osama, second, by Scott, always in favor, this is a roll call, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So the motion was by...
Osama.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we'll now enter into closed session. Thank you for being here, folks.